Judy Birdie emails me once a week and asks me what's going on. And despite my usual...
She does three times a week.
Judy Birdie is our pet pal. And despite my usually big mouth, I try and be discreet when I need to be. And our broker urged me not to say anything publicly until we have deals, because I don't want to be in the position of announcing something. And then there's a snap for the last second with a lease negotiation, which happens more often than any like the pen. So soon we will be going public with our redesign, with some more ideas for design and street furniture and more tenants are. And we're thinking that the next, probably six months, is going to be the beginning of the transformation of Main Street corridor. We're very excited about it. And we're excited to have John here. Because part of the strengthening of Main Street corridor and part of retaining retail investment on the island is to have great stores on Main Street and to have greater CDs at the Amper Ten at the northern end of the corridor. One of the reasons we got involved and one of the reasons we put out an RFP to select a new operator is because their studies show that eighty-six cents out of every dollar, retail dollar, are spent off-island. And when the corridor doesn't look great, it doesn't feel great, and there are a lot of vacancies, and you begin to feel demoralized about your retail options in Roosevelt Island's most part of Edmond community. You are getting dinner to go before you jump on the tram or you're buying your toothpaste before you get on the F. And if you want to reverse that, to the extent that Roosevelt Islanders support their local retail and eighty-six cents out of every dollar spent on the island, it'll create a vibrant, thriving corridor. From our eight stores in Riverwalk through the corridor and then ending at Christie's. And I think there are a lot of exciting things happening on the island, from the Cornell techy on campus to the F-Town Memorial opening in October to our retail work. So in that spirit and in that context, we are asking the existing retail, the existing Main Street tenants to reinvest in their space and improve their spaces and improve their looks and improve their storefronts and improve their operations. And we sat down with John and his team at Christie's a few weeks ago to talk about what they had in mind for their operations. And, you know, they've obviously been a long-term tenant on Roosevelt Island and what their thinking was. And we were excited to hear that they have big plans for renovation and redesign. And based on our conversation, we thought it would really help Christie's team to have, you know, you wouldn't even call it a meeting, you could call it a focus group, you could call it a customer survey, but a town hall meeting. And so that's really the end of my role as your host. If you have major retail questions, you can ask me at the same time you get up. So I'm going to hand the mic over to John. And I think the process should be pretty straightforward, which is that John will talk, say whatever's on his mind. You guys can line up behind the microphone and ask a question or make your comment or give your speech. And please limit any comments to, let's say, a minute. And depending upon how long it goes, we'll either cut it off or we'll keep going. And then maybe we'll all go over to Nan's Potash, we have a lot of fun, for example, at the Superlative Retail. When we go to Travis. Or China One. I love all my retail people. With that, let me hand it over to John. Have some tea.
Thank you, Jim. And I'm glad to be back here on the coast of Ohio. I come here occasionally on surprise visits to see what's going. We've been a ten years since we bought our stores company in, I think, nineteen ninety-one, so we've been here for over twenty years. I think we've remodeled the store at least three times in the last one year. And we are set to do another major remodeling. And I told them that, you know, we're committed. I'm a New Yorker and I've always been committed to New York. I'm committed to do, and I've come here to listen to your input. We brought here our team with us today. And like you guys, stand up and introduce yourselves. Jim, all of you stand up.
Jim Moens.
Jim Moens, who runs day-to-day operations for the stores.
Hi, I'm Udo.
Charlie.
Charlie Criscoll.
Charlie runs the company day-to-day.
Audio for us.
Storming.
So very entertaining those two. You know, like I said, we own Sloane's, which became Christie's for over twenty years. I think it's important to listen to our customers and get input from them. About a year ago, a year and a half ago, we changed major suppliers. We've been dealing with microschools for over thirty years. And when we found that they weren't treating us right and that, also, at that point, if they don't treat us right and give us the right deals, we won't be able to give up and sue the supermatters. So we went to ShopRite. ShopRite is the most competitive brand in New Jersey. I would say they're number one in the northeast and number one on the east coast. And we're almost completely switched over to the ShopRite brand. So I'd love to hear your input on that brand. My ideas, we've had this store on the joint board for about a year now. The initial plans that our people gave me, I wasn't happy with. I wanted a little bit different. And I'll tell you what my thoughts are. My thoughts are, I think people like to see more produce, more fresh produce, because people are eating poor produce. If you look at the new guidelines for health from our government that says that we should eat twenty-five percent fruits and vegetables, twenty-five percent fruits, twenty-five percent vegetables, twenty-five percent protein and twenty-five percent grains. So people, our produce sales in the last ten years have doubled. Our meat sales in the last ten years have gone down in half. So we're going to be changing around the departments. The other thing that I pushed our people to do is have more organic foods. And the big advantage of ShopRite, they have a private label needs, you're buying it for less. And the ShopRite private label, the quality is excellent. So you'll be able, if you want organic foods, they have over a couple hundred varieties. You'll be able to buy organic foods at a full rate, not at whole paycheck prices. And no, no contentment. So I think organic foods are important. I've urged our meat department, I've urged our produce departments, I want more organic foods. Where in the next year or two, our theme for Christie's will be Christie's supplying organic foods to the community at supermarket prices, not at whole paycheck prices. So I think that's very important for all of us. I'm a firm believer, you know, I've been in the food business forty-two years, which is a long time. And when my kids were born, my daughter too is well, my son, nineteen years old, we made sure we gave them organic eggs and organic milk. And it wasn't a hundred percent organic, but we felt that when we took organic food, we felt we were giving more and more stuff. Because especially the New Yorkers that feel their... New Yorkers are more educated than the rest of the country. And New Yorkers want better products for their children and for their families. And even though, like I said, I brought my team along for you, for them to take notes, I haven't run a company for day-to-day for over ten years. But since I live in New York, I'm committed to make sure we're delivering the right products. I don't want to go to a cocktail party someplace and say, "Oh, you had a terrible, this was terrible, that." So I'm here to listen. And thank you for having me. And I'll take your room. I'll take your questions and we'll try to answer them one by one. A lot of questions.
I'd like to go first, first of all. Here's the circular thing, other place for a shot. Good evening, my name is Nina Lublin. You and I have been emailing since Friday regarding...
You're the comparison shopper?
I was the comparison shopper for The Wire for quite some time. And then I did something that upset you terribly many years ago. And so you pulled your advertising out of The Wire. Then I think we all kissed and made up collectively. And then your advertising was back in The Wire right around the time the last expansion of the store took place. So I'm here, though, to kind of say to you a couple of things. And please don't hold me to a minute, because I think as somebody who's lived here for thirty years, who remembers Sloane's when I first got there.
It might be missing a bit.
No, I know. You know, I can honestly say, you know, Sloane's was really something else. And we are fortunate that we...
Nina, let me, I take back my process suggestion, because I feel bad for everybody standing up.
Well, I'm not looking to see it. I'm making my point.
It's not about you. Why doesn't everybody sit down? And I'll call on people one by one. So everybody doesn't have to stand up for twenty minutes. And we'll get through everybody. Nina, I'm talking about you. So just everybody have a seat and we'll call on you one by one. And then you don't have to stand in the corridor waiting your turn. Go ahead, Nina.
So I have looked through all the changes, all the expansions. And as I told you in my email the other day, I don't shop online. I shop at my supermarket on my island, no matter what. And, but I also live, work a block away from a supermarket that is a third of the size of yours, that has much less space and yet manages to have the most competitive prices of any place I've been all over Manhattan, including the Food Emporium, including all your other stores in Manhattan and D'Acquisto in particular. And so no matter what happens...
We'll get David to reduce the rent and we'll be cheap.
But just the rent?
There you go. But what I want to say is for some of us, this is about the store and the physical plant and the kinds of improvements that need to be made quickly to get people into the store and to get them to shop. There are things that need to be rebuilt, repaired, moved around, and that has to be taken care of. But for most of us, it's all about the prices, you know? And it really does make a significant difference to us. RD and I meet once a week, I bring the circular, I'm sure. Even though you haven't had the hands-on responsibility or day-to-day operations for ten years, you are more than aware of what's going on in the supermarket business. And I'll give you one example and I'll say one other thing and I'll stop. The switch to the ShopRite brand is really very interesting because some of those prices, the quality of the ShopRite stuff is very high, but some of those prices here on the island are higher than the ShopRite stores in New Jersey, where I have shopped at. Not all of them, not all of them, but some of them. So that needs to be looked at very carefully. Because ShopRite is a very high-quality product. Many of the things aren't really good and they're well-made. And, but some of the prices on the shelves are higher, okay? And that needs to be looked at very carefully.
Can I add something? New Jersey and New York are two different areas. Our average rent in New York is almost ten percent sales. Our, the average rent in New Jersey is one and a half percent sales. The average electric cost in New York is over three percent sales. The average electric cost in New Jersey is one half a second, a one second of sales. Listen, we live in New York. This is the cards that have been dealt to us. Like I said to you on email, almost every chain in New York has gone bankrupt. You know, Grand Union, A&amp;P, Royal, Food Direct. You pointed out a few others, Bodai. Every one of them has been going bankrupt. And Sloane's was going to go bankrupt when we bought them. We bought the Steedys, the Steedys was going to go bankrupt, or not go bankrupt, Southland's, the older Steedys, didn't want to import it anymore. And when we bought them. I mean, I am a New Yorker. I grew up on the Upper Side of Manhattan, on one hundred thirty-fifth Street. And I have committed to New York. And we're just trying to do the best we can. We are not making a zillion dollars in the supermarket. We're keeping our heads above water.
But one way I think...
And you know what my comment to Forbes Magazine was? When somebody said, "You're in Forbes Magazine, you're way there." I said, "The higher one on the list, there wasn't a supermarket."
Well, I think while you still are in the supermarket business and in the real estate business and as a supporter of political candidates and as a great donor to many charities, we see your name in the paper quite a bit. We hope they can give us...
I'm prepared today to forth the, you have to go up one. I have to go to my office today that we will help to donate sponsorship on the, in this office.
But I think the other thing is, I think, you know, first of all, with regard to RD, you have a great manager, the vice key, but he needs a lot of, he needs the kind of staff and support that makes the supermarket work. And finally, I just want to say something about the Christie's name. I'm a native New Yorker. I was born in Queens in nineteen fifty-one. Except for ten years, I've lived my whole life in New York. And I remember when, but I remember when the name of Christie's on a supermarket meant high-quality, decent prices, and it was the destination where you went to shop. And that's what we should have. We should not be calling ourselves the Red Apple. We should restore the name to what it really means if we're really serious.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And one other comment on pricing is, like I said, we try to do the best we can. And we all look at individual prices item by item. But everybody has different sales every week. If you take the items that we have on sale, that food should be higher on some items. So it goes back and forth. It's not, you know...
But the point is, and Judy made this point, the same things have been on sale without any change and other things are not on sale. When ice cream is $2.99 for forty-eight ounces at one supermarket and it's still eight dollars in our supermarket, we're not looking at the pricing and we're not looking at what gets into the store.
And what I mean, this, when I get emails, I love major emails, just, I try to fix things. All I ask is just be specific. You know, tell me the items. I go back and I yell at them, "First, how you move?" I'm yelling, "How you move?" And I send it and check with them what it cost us and what it cost us to stay in business. You gotta remember something. We had a percentage that it cost us to stay in business. And it's called, which is called a gross margin. If you, if we buy for sixty cents, we have to sell at ninety-nine cents. We need a forty percent margin between rent, electricity, payroll, et cetera, just to stay in business.
That's a sixty-six percent margin.
No, it's, it's, we buy for sixty cents itself, but for ninety-nine cents, it's thirty-nine cents. Divide by ninety-nine is thirty-nine percent. That's the way it's done. Check with them, okay?
Hi, my name is Barbara Siegel. I live on the island for over twenty-three years. I live in Westview. I have two children and I'm married. Just a little background on how long you've been looking here. I went to Christie's today, you know, and then you were coming in, and you were looking at expanding. And I, I looked around at some of the things, because I don't shop at Christie's, because I've hated it for so long. I've been so aggravated and frustrated with it. And it's my emergency story, yes? I might eat a loaf of bread. I can go there, now, now the deli is open until four in the morning, so maybe I don't need to go there. But anyway, I don't think you're competitive. And that's my problem. You have expired dates on so many items. You have bad, really bad, disgusting service. I can tell you, I don't feel that the manager of the store is receptive to my complaints ever. I went into the store today and I have Fresh Direct. That's who I use. I use Fresh Direct. And I, I saw, you know, they give you a little scanner so you can scan the barcodes of your store and look at the price of the Fresh Direct. You can compare, a great way to compare. So I went in there and I had my favorite ice cream, Ede's Ice Cream, chocolate ice cream. Five fifty-nine for the same thing, eight ninety-nine. Why would it be three and a half dollars more? I don't understand. That's ridiculous.
Push, maybe somebody has on sale and we don't have...
No, they don't have on sale. It's not on sale, that's, no, we're not actually. It used to be four ninety-nine and now it went up to five fifty-nine. So it's not on sale. But I go to here and I...
I will check, I will check.
Please let me finish. A can of tuna dish, dollar sixty-nine, Fresh Direct, a dollar ninety-nine to Ede's. I can go on forever and ever and ever, okay? Then I talked to the manager and when I showed him the price and I said, "Why would I shop here?" He turned his head, walked away and said, "I would shop here either." Okay? He said that himself. Another gentleman was there, I really don't know who it is and I'm sorry, I don't know. Today, there was somebody working, I'm talking about a manager person with a white shirt and tie, somebody who was working behind your desk. He said to me, my wife says that to me all the time. He says, "All the prices are too hot." But it's the expired dates.
Well, that, I'd like to get answered.
I have to...
We should not have, let me tell you something. We should not have any expired dates.
Okay, let me just tell you something.
And if you're... Let me finish. If we find a specific department that an employee is not doing their job, but I gotta know which department and I gotta see if it's in the system, then I guarantee you that women and father complain to the union because all union employees, you can't just say goodbye. You have to, you have to file a complaint with union and you need three different instances with same...
Okay, I'm not wanting to fire the employer.
No, no, if you can't complain, you can't complain without having to be able to fix it.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you...
I mean, if people don't do their job, they shouldn't have a job.
Let me, let me tell you something. You're putting the, the responsibility of your employees but on responsibility...
Well, who is it? Do you think... Do you think that I tell them leave expired products from the shelf?
Yes, I'll tell you why.
Oh, my God.
Let me, please, let me...
Give me a break.
Please, let me finish my story, okay? I went in there with expired cheese. And I said, "This cheese is fine and expired." And the man said, "Okay, I'll give you money back, fine, everything's good." I walked away and called somebody over and said, "Put this cheese back on the shelf." The man...
Who? What man did you say?
It wasn't this one, it was a different one. It was a different one.
You're not answering that question. Stand up, go to the microphone, tell me what you're doing about expired products. All right? All expired merchandise, and we finally take it all to the shelf. Whether it's reclaimable or reclaimed, whether it's not, it's all...
Stop louder.
All right, and your supervisor is who? Mr. Moens, Mr. Moens, step up to the microphone. I want you, listen to me. I want you to give Mr. Moens every day, if there's any complaints about expired products, give it to Mr. Moens. And Mr. Moens, you file a unit complaint on those employees and then after three unit complaints, make sure you do your job and they don't have a job.
I gotta finish that.
Okay, everybody, hey. Okay, so, let's, okay, wait, let's, let's set the tone here, okay? John came here, we can have a civilized conversation. You can be, you can be angry and give lots of ideas in a respectful manner. So let's finish your last, and for future speakers, try and give a succinct anecdote. Let's try and keep your comments to sixty seconds. And we'll get through everybody's speaker, so last, last comment. And wait, if I can see a hand for who's on deck. Aaron Hamrigger's on deck.
When I was in there the other day, I was, it was, it was a crowded day. And there, and I said to the manager, "You think we should open up, you should open up another cash register?" Because there was a long line, you know, ten, fifteen people. I know when I go to other stores, they are...
That is wrong. If they're doing that, that is wrong.
And the man...
And if I were to put myself on the scene and saw that, they would be heads to it.
And I said to him, and he said to me, "I don't have anybody else." And I thought to myself, "But you're the manager, why don't you, can't do the cash sharing then?" What, you can step up to the...
I agree.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you for coming.
Thank you. And listen, you have our email address. Make sure you email us, but be specific.
Hi, good evening, thank you for coming. My name is Ann Moskara.
Put the microphone up.
First, I'd like to start with a couple of compliments. One, I think your store hours are very convenient, you're open relatively early and you stay open late. So that's very helpful, especially for those of us who work long hours. Also, you do have some employees who are very accommodating to the customers and, you know, work, work very hard. But something I would like to see is just an improvement on the attitudes of the cashiers. I don't know, I know with the union, it's difficult. And I've been a manager and I worked in HR, so I know how your needs can be. But maybe your recruiting efforts, just keep that in mind because some of them are absolutely insulting and it takes away the rest of the good qualities of the store. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And before anybody leaves today, make sure you have our email address. You can email me at jnc@christie.com. And if you have cashiers that are not proper, believe me, when I get that email, I will forward it to the personnel department and have the personnel department do their job.
It's JNC?
At Christie's dot com.
My name's Aaron Hamrigger. I shop at Christie's routinely for most of my groceries once a week, usually on senior discount day. And I would say that you're the only supermarket that I know that has senior discounts on two days, Tuesday and Wednesday. Most other supermarkets have it on one or the other day. I'm not gonna talk pricing, I'm not gonna talk about all that because we've had enough on pricing already. I, I want to point out a couple of things that makes it frustrating for me to shop at the store. First, I would say is what I would call poor inventory control. You're frequently out of very popular items that don't, you know, and then come back on the shelves for weeks. Let me give you just three little examples of the kind of thing I'm talking about. Snapples, iced tea, dial-iced tea. Has to be one of the most popular, I would think.
I love the dial peach.
Well, I don't like the peach, but that's... Used to have cases, used to have cases of the iced lemon iced tea. Don't, haven't seen a case in six months. And on many shopping days, there isn't, there aren't individual bottles. So that's an example of, I think, another favorite of mine is Stillwater. That's a standard item. We go weeks without any distilled water in the store. That should be, you know, routinely filled up. I'll give you one third one, it's just peculiar to me. But it's an example, these kind of examples are rouse stores. And that is your Campbell's soup dispense. I use a lot of Campbell's chicken broth.
Too much salt in that?
I know, but nevertheless.
Never watch a salt...
Yeah, yeah, I like to hear that a lot. Because I know, we haven't had any, even though there's a sign for a slot for Campbell's Chicken Broth on the Campbell's dispense. That slot has been devoid of chicken, chicken broth for months. There's some other soup there that doesn't correspond to the sign.
Can I tell you something?
Yeah.
I want the best store that, I want to give you the best store. If you have a computer, email me the specifics, I will fix them. And if you people continuously email me and my people know that I'm getting those emails, they will do a better job, okay? You know?
I will...
Because if the voice knows, they'll do a better job.
I've been complaining to the manager, not necessarily this guy, Artie, but whoever.
Is there a reason why there's no Stillwater?
Well, there is. This week there was.
There's also in the gallon.
Yeah, this week there was, there was. But last week, last week, there was no gallon which is a solid, you know, of the Stillwater. There's zero.
Keep those emails coming.
Okay, I will.
And I love to do the right job for computers.
Let me quickly tell you another frustrating thing. Again, it all goes back to how you manage the store. And that is pricing labels, particularly in the produce section. They're either missing, there's no pricing that they want on the shelf.
Is there a sign?
No, 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 I, 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 not, not all, technically zero missing, okay? And then on many of those pricing labels, it's incorrect. It's for the wrong item or for a product. Now, this is a sign of lacking poor management of the produce section. Okay. The one, one last thing I would say, I do appreciate your shop rate. I used to do it when I lived in Delaware, I did all my shopping in a shop, a supermarket, it was terrific. The other thing I would say about this store, which is an opportunity for you to redesign, you've got lots and lots of space, you can make...
We're trying to see how we can improve that space and if you people have comments, well, on additional departments, put something up.
Okay. All right, Judy, and you're on deck. Susan's on deck.
You're lucky I went to doing, I went to Riverfront, Riverwalk Ranch and there's a short bill. Why not the conveyor, first of all, John...
If, if you don't behave yourselves, I'll bring you back.
Unfortunately, we cannot bring him back, he's gone to the terminal. So, Mr. Catfertini is most generous to the historical society whenever we have an event. We have our art gallery opening, he provided the refreshments. We have the chaos opening, provided the refreshments. Whenever we ask for something, he's very, very generous. And, I, you know, it's, it hurts to have to cadish all the time. First of all, you get to the store, the conveyor belt doesn't work at the cash register. So there you are pushing your groceries down to the cash register. You go to the ice cream refrigerator, there's no special sign on it. We are convinced that someone is stealing the Tropicana and orange juice special signs because Artie keeps telling me they're there. A lot of the specials just, the labels don't get up in time. It's Friday, I get the circular and it's, oh, look, friendly ice cream's two ninety-nine, I'll buy that. You get there, well, maybe it's not. That's another thing, I don't blame the store manager, I don't know what happens between getting these labels to the store and getting them on the merchandise. You use the shopper's shopping carts for stocking. You don't, so you get to the store, there's no shopping carts or only one or two shopping carts because the employees have no other carts to use for stocking. So there are all the customer carts he uses for stocking. And for metal washback, you know, you don't look at the bottom of the carts. Let me finish. What happened to Wise potato chips? What happened to Roof Gold? You don't have these products anymore, they vanished. You don't buy them, they don't sell. It's ridiculous, I love Roof Gold, Frenchels, we have a few vices.
And you're not, Charlie, and you can't see the question, I think you specialize in potato chips?
No.
I'll have to look for it, I can't find it on the shelf. Meat is in...
Would you fly your free on salesmen tomorrow and make sure?
Meat is inconsistent. Well, maybe you want lamb chops, we have no lamb products this week. You want pork, we have no pork. How, you go to the supermarket, you expect to find the basics there.
I agree, one hundred percent.
But why, why is this, what do you, I can't play...
You don't have a store manager. That happens, you email me right away and you know I respond to you all the time.
I know.
And you know one other thing, that my people hear about it when you don't.
I understand, but I can't point your people, it's the company, there's something about it.
Somebody's wrong.
And you're the guy that's gonna get it. It's just the frustration of stupid little things. I go in there, Artie is wonderful, the staff is wonderful, Jimmy the butcher is great. Everyone I know since I've been shopping during the day, I know the whole family there. And, but you want, I have to shop now because my mother's living with me. I can't go to trade fair, I can't go to Pathmark, I, I, all I can do is certain amount of fresh egg. And it kills me to walk out with two bags that cost sixty dollars with, as we say in Jewish, garnish in it. And you have to understand, I know it's expensive to run a business, but you have to look at who's shopping in your market. The seniors, the disabled, the people who can't get off the island and they're the ones that are the people with unlimited incomes and they're the ones that are paying the highest for their food. I mean, you look here, how many people here are from South Riverwalk, from the new buildings? Very few, they don't even...
Don't do class warfare, very...
It's true, it's true, you look who's in the...
Leave that class warfare, Washington.
And, thank you for your community generosity and let's hope for improvements.
Thank you, Judy, so Susan's up and on deck is that gentleman on the island. Uh, no, behind you.
We will improve, but I need your help, I need your input. And don't be afraid to tell me, don't be afraid to talk about it. And I will hold our people accountable.
I'm here to defend your checkout women, Esprit Twana. I think, I think most people, I don't know how many people here have ever shopped or lived in the suburbs where they will not bag for you. You have to do your own bagging, all they'll do is push your items down the, what do you, the conveyor belts and you have to do your own bagging. So, your women at Esprit Twana will always bag, so, I mean, we really should appreciate it, it's rare. However, I do wanna point out that as soon as I walk in your store, your floors are worse than mine, which is saying something. So, I'm never filthy, as soon as you walk in the front door, you have dirty hands.
We're actually gonna put in a new floor when we remodel this store.
Okay, so I think, you know, the first impressions, you know, are so, so important and to see a filthy floor in a food establishment is a bit discouraging. But otherwise, I know you're trying your best, but please do this sooner than later, thank you.
Thank you very much for the knowledge.
Okay, you're on deck, in the white shirt.
Hi, I'm Steve Marcus. I'm maybe one of the few people here that hardly ever shops in your store and I'm gonna tell you why. I got a car, I got a bike, I don't have to, thank God. And my reason I say thank God is because your prices are very high compared to, you know, compared to Pathmark, Associated, where I usually frequently go, trade fair. Your prices are much higher. Your fruits and vegetables, just go take a look elsewhere and compare yourself. I don't like the fruits and vegetables that I see there. On the plus side, you usually have a nice ice cream special and you usually have some Cinnamon specials. And so I wanna thank you for that. Your store is a attractive store. Look at all the other stores in Queens that, you know, your competitors around. Not only, you know, they're all equivalently nice, I think yours is nicer than all of them. I think you're wasting your money if you're trying, if, if you're spending it, if you think you're gonna get more sales by improving the look of your store, I think you're making a mistake, I think you have to improve your price.
And if I valued money, I would not be in a supermarket.
Right.
Okay, honestly, honestly, when I heard that you were refurbishing, refurbished about, I don't know, six, seven years ago? You made it the Vegas store, whatever that is.
We did it three times in the last twenty minutes.
Okay, I think that's more than your competitors, you know, I mean, go to, go to Pathmark, the place is, the place is a slum.
They're, they're like, oh, totally.
Okay, okay. Also, I've never seen slower checkout people and you can just wait, you can just wait forever. And I, I just find that I, I don't shop through that life, so it's not that many minutes out of my life. But for what it's worth, I'm never gonna email you because it's your job to, to do that, it's not my job.
Stand up.
Okay, be well.
Thank you. So, you, the corner pro, on the island, on deck, Captain, you're awesome.
I don't usually have anything to say, but I have to tell you today is one day I agree with Steve. I very rarely come to the store because of the prices, but if you want us to shop there, I think the very best thing is to lower your prices because you're getting more of us coming. Whatever you're saying, you need this much more, this many, this many more percentage, if you have more shoppers, you can make that difference up. And I definitely come and shop if the prices were in the area, I'm very favorable, very favorable. And I would walk over the bridge, down to Pathmark, down to all the other stores in the neighborhood just to get that better price. I would love not to walk. And if you could just make that adjustment, I think you'll have most of the islanders with you. And I think if you have more of a shopping, the prices would go down and whatever difference you think you're gonna lose, you have to lose if you made us, thank you.
And you, the light blue shirt is on deck.
Hi, my name is Ray Schwartz, I've lived here for thirty-one years. David, thank you for being used to seeing here and I thank you for coming. I have two things. One, and poor Artie has heard of my breath on this, you have three checkout counters. Now, as you are aware, this island is called Roosevelt Island and it was named for Franklin Delano Roosevelt, you know, the guy in the wheelchair?
Nineteen thirty-seven.
Thank you. The problem that I, that I see with those checkout counters is the one and only one that's riding a wheelchair or a walker or me when I read, when I babysit my granddaughter and I have this stroller, is the one on the outside. The conveyor belt is broken and your checkout people complain, "It's too close to the door, it's too cold." The problem is, not only are they not using it for those reasons, but I have observed, and I've been there quite a bit since I've been babysitting for my granddaughter, I have observed some really snotty, horrible behavior from a variety of the checkout people who humiliate the people in wheelchairs. They're not supposed to do that. I know that your store was built before ATA compliance, but sometimes I will walk over to Artie and I'll say, "Just open up the damn counter so that I can get this stroller through." Because what they do is they'll say, "Well, just put your things on the counter and then come around." And the meantime, they have the person behind you shoving their stuff through and you don't know whether you're getting your own stuff or somebody else's stuff. And I think that the people who are disabled should not be humiliated by having to come around. I think that if you're going to only have one counter open because you're short of staff, make it that wide aisle all the time and that's something you can do before you renovate it. So please, I'm begging you.
I agree, tell them.
Okay, Artie, please, and you know, Mr. C, I know you're gonna spend a lot of money on the renovations, but it would probably only cost you a few hundred dollars to get that conveyor belt fixed.
Charlie, can you comment on the conveyor belt?
I'll take care of it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And if it's not taken care of by next week, please email me and you know.
Okay, the second comment I have, you know that your competitor down the street, Dwayne Reed, is as part of the Walgreens chain, which is also in financial difficulty. You know that they are no longer accepting express scripts and some of the other pharmacy benefit manager plans. And so, because we wanna shop on the island, like Steve, I don't have to, I drive, I, I have feet, I can walk and I can go on the trail and go into the city, but I really believe in supporting my local vendors. So, I got my doctors to write the prescription and I brought it over to Grustides. Tell me why for a basic drug like a thyroid drug, thyroid drug, I think half the people in this room are on thyroid medicine, they didn't have it stopped two days to get the prescription. One of my neighbors had surgery recently, she came home from the hospital and the reason is because number one, their shelf space is so limited, the inventory is limited. And the other thing is the over the counter stuff that we need, you know, for hay fever, allergies, the headaches and whatever. Your shelf space is so limited, either that or your supplier is so bad that you're not stocked up on that stuff. So I came in to get my thyroid meds and I still had to go over to CVS to get my allergy over the counter medicine because your supplier doesn't carry it, so you might...
I, I will look into it.
Thank you. And the last thing is pricing. My daughter-in-law came one day and they, at the last minute, they decided to stay for dinner and she didn't have enough diapers with her. So while I was preparing dinner, she walked over to Grustides and she got a thirty-six piece package of Panthers, nineteen ninety-five. Okay? Every place sells, pharmacies, supermarkets, babies are us, every place in the geographic area, ten ninety-five. It was almost double. So again, you have to look at your supplier, please, you might wanna choose suppliers for your pharmacy. Okay? And while you're expanding your store, while you're renovating it, you have a tremendous area next to the pharmacy, which you're using now for stationery. We have a stationary store here on the island, please expand your pharmacy section.
We just hired, or I just hired, somebody from Twane Reed to beef up the whole pharmacy, health and beauty section.
Thank you.
All right, so the woman in my blue, followed by a woman who is right, right, right there, yes. And I just did that, you know, I think some things are obviously coming through and it might be interesting for John to also hear about, in terms of renovation, if there are different departments that you think should be expanded or attracted, for instance. You know, a lot of these supermarkets have cafes, they have prepared foods, they have salad bars, so it would be interesting for John and his team to hear your thoughts about what you think would do well that's not normally being provided.
My name is Mary Ann Rossin, I've been here thirty years, I've seen all of your renovations and I was very excited for about a week and then they went downhill from there, every time. What I really did wanna talk about is exactly what you just mentioned. I don't know what your overall plans are for Main Street, but we don't have a bakery, we don't have a fish market, your meat department is terrible and there's no butcher. Pharmacy is terrible. So what I was gonna suggest to you, the areas that you need to focus on, the kinds of things people buy on a daily basis. A great produce, a fabulous little place, you have some La Graya products right as you walk indoors, it's on a rack about this big, if you don't get there by a certain time, they're gone, fresh bread. I want a bakery. So, I don't know if you have that planned elsewhere, but in a store like Grustides, you should be able to walk in and that would bring you crowds, people who want fresh things every day. I'll be happy to walk to the back corner of the store for my favorite cereal because every supermarket has a box of cereal. I'll go back there and get that or whatever else is in that category. But have a bakery, doesn't have to be big, with fresh bread every day, have a...
Do you know...
Fish market, you have about this much old looking fish. Am I right?
Very powerful.
You know, do you ever see that you could put... Do you ever see that you could put a butcher in a market like this? Because I, I buy, any, every time I have to buy a roast or something, I, I don't food them for it, I lug it home. Where are they?
They're in the back.
Do you have a, a bell to ring if a customer wants them? Or anything like that?
I've never seen them, I've never seen anybody offer, I've never, I just wear my...
Would you guys ring something?
She said it's season outside smoking, okay. Anyway, then the other thing I wanted to, so if you got some of those areas that people want every day, fresh meat, fresh fish, fresh produce, drugstore, the things that gather the crowd, the way there's a crowd people like to come, it's a good feeling environment. The next thing I wanna talk about is, I can barely bring myself to go to Grustides because it is so depressing down there. And Motorgate is...
The what?
It's so depressing down there, Motorgate is not your fault. But you mentioned before your overhead and I'm an old retailer, I know...
We get leaks all the time from the garage.
I know that.
And that's, when he walked into my office and complained about the tiles that looked terrible, I complained back to him that it's the leak in the garage that we have never, that Riyadh was never, ever able to fix, so those leaks continue. So we must have changed those tiles a thousand times.
Are you a responsible man from Motorgate?
No, he's not responsible, but doing it, I informed him of the problem.
No, Riyadh is still responsible for Motorgate, but we, the second we had that conversation with John, we told you...
I wanted to bring that up just because you're here, you live in Motorgate, there's some Riyadh board members here or potential board members, I'm not sure if there's officially yet. Something has to be done to keep me from walking away because that area is so dark, so dreary, so dank, so dirty. We need lighting, signs, get your fingers, need a sign that's out on the corner. Have something nice and bright and bright as I'm walking in the door.
They need something underneath the...
Well, you need something.
Yeah. You need a...
But lighting, open, get, get some lighting.
That's not our space under the, the trailer.
Why couldn't it be, why... Why, because the, what it means to your advantage to contribute...